Good morning. This is the third Democratic Republic, sixth House of Representatives, first year of tenure, sixteenth regular meeting, as per our constitution, Article fifty-eight, some Article one, and also internal regulations of the House, numbers stated. As among the members, three hundred twenty-five are in attendance, so the quorum is met. The agenda items for today are: one, the two thousand fifteen budget year on the draft budget, and also current issues, Prime Minister will be responding to questions from members of the parliament. And secondly, Planning Budget Finance Standing Committee would give a report on the draft proclamation and then would review that and approve the budget proclamation. Secondly, the fifteenth regular meeting, minutes will be looked into. And thirdly, Justice Democratic and External Standing Committee and National Proclamation on Report on National Security Proclamation. And fourthly, External Connections and Peace Standing Committee on the proclamation on the Georgetown Agreement. Fifth and the last one, today being the closing year, would be listening to the government report in the morning, would be dealing with our discussion with the Prime Minister in the afternoon, going to other agenda items. So agenda number one, in two thousand five draft proclamation, and also on other issues, members of the parliament would be posing questions, would be listening to the questions, and I'll give the floor to those registered to render questions. The first one, Wizero Banyech Demeka.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And also, I thank Dr. Abi Ahmed, His Excellency Prime Minister, for being here to respond to our questions. I would read my question. National exams, there has been attempts to digitalize national exams, and this is believed to have positive contribution to quality of education, but currently these national exams, instead of evaluating the qualification of students, is being politicized, and it is turning into a national security issue. This thing, on the one hand, can create a lack of credibility among the students on our evaluation system, and on the other hand, it would affect the quality of education. These are other problems. In order to come up with solutions, attempts have been made to go online, but in our recent assessment indicates that the attempt to bring one million tablets has not been successful so for the national exam in two thousand fifteen. What is the government doing to make it a success? If you would elaborate, thank you. Honorable Thomas van der Kabe. Thank you, Honorable Speaker, and I also want to thank His Excellency the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our questions. My question has to do with foreign relations. Our country Ethiopia has been able to rebut external forces in our history, and one great example is Adwa Victory, while the entire continent was under colonization. Ethiopia has been among those who started the League of Nations, and also member of the Nana Line Movement in nineteen sixty-three, started the AU in Addis Ababa, and also for the AU and collective security, Ethiopia has contributed a lot in Korea and Congo in King's Time, and also Rwanda, Burundi, Liberia, Sudan, Darfur, and Somalia, and the fight against Al-Shabaab has been successfully contributing towards its ventures. So our national forces, very courageous and highly disciplined in humanitarian nature, has been well spoken of in Africa, and has attained international recognitions, and have contributed a lot towards world peace. However, some Western countries do not think well of us, and they have collaborated against us and supporting our enemies and denying us loans, and they have tried everything to dismantle what they call a regime change, even within one where they have tabled our case fourteen times, they have stood against our path to development. Russia and China have used veto power and stood on our side, and also India, Turk, and our friends in Africa have helped us to defy their attempts. The situation in Tigray, the fact that the state of emergency have been lifted, the political prisoners have been released, and a corridor for humanitarian courier has been opened, and also a committee for peace talks is there. How is the current attitude of the Westerners and Prime Minister? Why is it that the Westerners are continually interfering against internal affairs? Is it because we are the source of the Nile River and our longstanding independent history? Our main enemies are Egypt and Sudan, and the Ethiopian Sudan people are connected historically, they have drank from the same river, and there's no problem among the peoples of the two countries, but the leaders have been directly causing disruption of peace in our country, and they are helping so-called religion of liberation movement of ethnic origin, and that they hate their countries, and traitors are training them in Sudan and equipping them. And it is the Sudan government that is behind all these. For instance, in Gambia and Gomo's traitors have caused lots of human lives, and also in Wolaga by war, Shane, they killed as young as three months of baby. It's against Ethiopian moral standing. The traitors would be dealt with, and they would reap what they sow. And also, after our northern forces have been attacked, Sudanese army trespassed our border, and they have held our land for more than one year and nine months, and border issues have been dealt with by a meeting in Cairo, that colonial borders will not be respected. Ethiopia, we thank our forefathers, who have maintained sovereign integrity through their own blood, and the borders have been maintained. So colonial borders, we will not observe colonial borders. Our country has been negotiating on this issue, we commend that because we know that war is destructive, but however, we don't see similar gestures from the government of Sudan. Excellency, our father says there's a limit to patience, so what is the constant of our government? These threats and also attacks by the Sudanese government, how is the government of Ethiopia looking at these? Thank you. Honorable Atu Ale Samengecha. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. I also want to thank the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our questions. From the region of Tigray, and also out of the region of Tigray, there are forces that speak against the TPLF, and they are fighting against TPLF, are fighting for the cause of Ethiopia, they are dispersed all over, and they are under a lot of distress, and these are Tigrayanze. These voices of distress need the support of Ethiopian people and the Ethiopian government in this regard. What is the government doing by way of supporting to these people? Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Wizero Masatabatgala. Thank you, Honorable Speaker, and I also want to thank Your Excellency Prime Minister Dr. Abi Ahmed. Honorable Speaker, if you'd allow me to speak one minute, if it is allowed, please proceed to your question. Thank you for the opportunity given. In our current security problems of our nation, as you know, our country Ethiopia, for the past twenty-seven years, we've been languishing from ethnic differences, but we, in EPRDF, the change agents fought hard, and as a result, hope has dawned in this country, Excellency Prime Minister. When you came to power, the entire country accepted you with joy and a lot of support. However, there's some forces, as a result of losing personal interests and in collaboration with foreign forces, they have attacked our country from all corners. However, our people are cognizant of the fact that change does not come without any cost, so Ethiopians within the country and without the country stood up together and used their money, knowledge, and also prayers, and also gave their very lives to stand with the government, refusing to be colonized. Especially the evil ethnic politics has been sowing seed, but the young people have proven that they would continue to stand for the unity of Ethiopia, and they are dying for this cause. As a result, with the political economic crisis and also under a time of war, we're able to continue with mega projects successfully, and this is to be commendable. However, priority must be given by the government to ensure the peace and security of its citizens, and also must be able to prevent calamities against the people. Honorable Prime Minister, the Amhara and Oromo people have lived together for ages, but people are fighting to create divisions with evil narratives by the Gentan Onakshane, and as a result, hatred has been used, and Wolaga, Alamoleda, and Gambia, lots of people have been killed, and this is the recent one. Even in the past, there have been a lot of destructions, fathers, women, and children have been attacked based on ethnic identity and religious identity. So even though the people are still on the side of the government, but precious human lives are being lost, and there's a lot of grievances among the people. The source of all this is Onakshane and the Gentan. They say that they have support within the government structures, that working government offices during the day, and they have been passing and tipping information for our opposing forces. Excellency, shouldn't we look into the government structure and remove forces that are within the government and working against us? Why is it difficult to do that? And what are we doing to combat such terrorist acts, and what are the strategies put in place in this regard? In these rainy seasons, the elderly, the women, the children fleeing for their dear lives, what are we doing to stabilize the situation and repatriate the displaced people? Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And I also want to thank Excellency Prime Minister, Prime Minister Dr. Abi for being here to respond to our questions. Excellencies. First of all, Honorable Speaker, I would want to thank, allow me to give thanks. For the sake of time, please, let's proceed to the questions. Honorable Prime Minister, in our development path and a ten-year development plan, expand industries in the Somali region, industry park, we don't have an agro-industry. You have come and visited yourself that agro-industry is conducive for our land. The second one is a request, Honorable Prime Minister, in the Gure city, have asked, the Gure city and the Ginder city from Somali, connect Somali in the Oromi region, it's an asphalt road, there have been requests for an asphalt road, because it would be very useful to connect the two people, we ask that it should be under federal project. Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Dr. Fatim Hadi. Thank you, Honorable Speaker, and also want to thank His Excellency the Prime Minister for being here to respond to our questions. I would read my question. Our country Ethiopia is among the highly populated countries in Africa, they say it's the number is about one hundred twenty million, thirty-five percent of these are young and productive years. These millions of productive youth can work within and also out of the country, that way they can support themselves and their families in the country. In connection with this, many productive countries are outside, like especially in Saudi, Kuwait, Qatar. When going there, looking for jobs, they sell their property, looking for better opportunities in life, they go legally and illegally. However, these citizens, they suffer a lot of violations of rights, they suffer all sorts of violations, some die in the process. The government has been taking positive measures to address grievances and to make sure that prisoners are released and repatriated back to their country. Foreign ministers reported forty-one thousand Ethiopians in the first round, and the second one, more than forty-seven thousand in general, in one year. In two thousand fourteen Ethiopian calendar, from Saudi only, eighty-eight thousand Ethiopians have been repatriated. The fact that we're able to do that indicates that the government really gives attention to its citizens. This support, this effort is commendable, but however, to come up with lasting solutions, what is the government thinking, planning, especially our country like other countries like Philippines and Indians? What's the government doing to increase the capacity of those looking for jobs outside, so be it in Middle East or anywhere in the world, that there would be competitive and respected job seekers, so that they would benefit themselves and the country better, like the Ministry of Jobs and Skills and Ministry of Social Affairs and Immigration? What are we planning to do within short and long-term plans concerning this? Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Atutus Faye Bango. Thank you, Honorable Speaker, and I also want to thank Your Excellency Prime Minister Dr. Abi Ahmed for being here to respond to our questions. In order to ensure security and peace of our people, the government has been engaged in lots of efforts. Some examples can be developing democratic institutions, freedom of expression, and building of justice sector institutions, and also building the capacity and institution of the defense forces, and also the National Dialogue Commission being established. These are some examples. Recently, an institution building efforts, you know, commitment to do that, the government is also engaging reforms of the police defense and other institutions that is inclusive of every Ethiopian. This being the case, however, destructive forces currently are working against our efforts and to distract us from our path of development and drag us back to vicious circle of poverty and make all our government efforts fruitless. They're working with our laws that work against us, our enemies from within and from without, they are killing and destroying property, and they want to create ethnic and religious conflicts. This is quite heartbreaking, and as parliamentarians, we grieve, and this would cause lack of credibility on the side of the people against the government. So why is it that, Your Excellency, political and security forces were not able to prevent such attacks, and what's being done in this regard, Excellency Prime Minister, in order to come up with the lasting solutions and also to destroy the agenda of our enemies? What is it you want from us as parliamentarians by our support? If you would comment on this, thank you. Wizero Galani Bekla, Honorable. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. I want to thank His Excellency Prime Minister for being here to respond to our questions. I would read my question. Excellency Prime Minister, when you came to power, our country was in a terrible condition, was not able even to pay monthly salaries for civil servants, and under heavy debts, but by our efforts in the homegrown economy, we were able to survive as a country, and the reform government, when you began to lead us, there's been a lot of economic changes and ensure economic transitions. For instance, the agriculture sector has grown by way of irrigation and also unstopp-ed wheat imports. This indicates that adequate attention has been given to agriculture, and also agricultural equipments are being imported free of tax. I want to thank you for this. However, irrigation wheat, the desire of farmers has increased, and the issue of fertilizers, water pump, there's a lot of shortage on these equipments on this two thousand fifteen budget. How do we deal with these shortages? And also, as you know, our country in two thousand fifteen budget year, seven hundred eighty-six billion baht has been assigned. How can you use this budget to fight high cost of life and stabilize the economy? If you would elaborate on that, for instance, agriculture, what are we thinking of increasing the agriculture sector development? Thank you. Atu Aschala Alamri, Honorable. Honorable Speaker. On the current issues, I want to thank His Excellency the Prime Minister for being here for responding to our questions, Honorable Speaker. Our country Ethiopia has been fighting traitors from within, and the country, within the country now, courageously. This is to be highly commended, especially in the past budget year, there's been all evil things, Ethiopia has entered and dismantled, but their wishes have been null and void. Ethiopia has been able to combat all these attacks and continues with all its dignity. As long as we stand together and work in cooperation, we will also continue in the past. And this is because of our government, our heroic defense forces, we should be proud of them, our security forces, as we all know. Even today, TPLF is trying to attack us, and this is posing threats to our people in general and to the Amhara in particular, and especially in the central part and also in the western part of our Ethiopia. There's a lot of destructive acts are being committed by the extremist Shane group, and this is posing a heavy threat, and government reports always is, either the extreme Shane has been dismantled and destroyed, but however, they continue to kill, to cause displacement of our people and closing doors on the current attack in Warada, in Kalam, Warada, in Gambia, ethnic and based, also religious based attacks have caused the death of quite many, and also displacement, and while we're supposed to go out farming, farmers have been shot dead, mothers have been shot dead with their children, children have been, their necks have been cut off. This is a problem of extremism, and this has not started today, but evil seed, hatred have been sown, and this is the result of this, I see it. Excellency, the first response of the government to ensure peace and security of the people, but this has not been the case. Our citizens do not feel secure and safe in their lands, so these terrorist attacks, the human acts are quite reprehensible. Excellency Prime Minister, what is the root cause of this problem? Why did your government fail to stop such ethnic-based destructions? Why did your government fail to stop such ethnic-based destructions? Behind every attack, they say that there are government forces and security forces that are supporting them. So why didn't we investigate and come up with urgent actions? And even now, what is the government doing to stop such attacks? And also the regional governments, if they fail to secure the peace and security of those that live under them, why are they not being held accountable? May God bless Ethiopia and its people.
Thank you, honorable speaker and Prime Minister. We thank you very much for coming here to respond to the questions of members of the House. Honorable Prime Minister, our Samara Road is one of the federal roads. Given the revenue. The revenue received from the road is enormous. However, people are abducted and tortured on those roads. Therefore, to make sure the road is safe and accessible to the public, what is planned and what is the fate of people that are killed on those roads? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is honorable Mr. Muluka Nasafa.
Thank you, honorable speaker. Thank you, honorable Prime Minister. And I'll present my questions as follows. First of all, public demonstrations. Stopping public demonstrations, especially in relation to the Amaras being killed in Wellaga. In Shuarabit, demonstrators that went to the streets have been killed and has also been has also resulted in bodily injuries in the days of many. In Bahadar University, Gondar University, Adisaba University. Students also faced bodily injuries. And this violates international and regional treaties the country signed. And also is against the constitutional rights under Article thirty. If you can give us your comments on this, honorable Prime Minister. And the people of our Amara in the past thirty years, and especially in the past four years, there has been a non-stop ethnic cleansing. And do you believe it's a challenge to the sovereignty of the country? And when does the government plan to stop this and how? And the justice institution. You have. Why is it difficult for it to place charges? And if it is impossible? Why is it difficult and how determinant are you to take this to international courts? There, we heard that your government Prosperity Party is planning to have negotiations with TPLF. And knowing that the actions of TPLF were against the country, do you think it's right for your party to negotiate unilaterally? While it's still a terrorist group designated as a country, don't you think it's also challenging to have negotiations with the group? Finally. The terrorist acts of Shini. You have been said to have been reluctant to speak against the acts of Shini. This connection group designated as a terrorist group, you proclaimed it as an irregular group. And called the genocidal acts as conflicts. Justice starts with calling groups with their actual names. And so, what is your response to that? Thank you very much. Next is honorable Lama Tasama.
Thank you, honorable speaker. Your Excellency Prime Minister, thank you for coming here to respond to our questions. And I will present my questions in reading as follows. Honorable Prime Minister. It's admirable that through your leadership, by using your wisdom and knowledge, you have worked on social, economic and political activities, withstanding several challenges. Honorable Prime Minister, as it is known, the media is considered as the fourth organ of the government. The role of the media is enormous in the development of a country. However, the negative is exceeding the positive. Our country is a country of diversity. And the media can be an instrument for political traitors to divide people with religion, ethnicity and territory. When a reform is planned, several challenges follow. In our country, aside from the reform, we see several conflicts. And the medias are working to increase that. By eroding the unity of the people, by creating lack of trust. The medias are working in order to stop them from this act. And to make them stand next to the government and towards unity. What do you suggest, if you can explain? Even though the acts, the measures taken against the junta and the Shini is admirable, the Shini is still continuing to kill citizens and causing bodily injuries. Therefore, honorable Prime Minister, in order to solve this problem, it requires a unique systematic approach. It also requires receiving the support of the public. Therefore, how can we increase the participation of the public and stop these acts? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is honorable Mr. Addisukamiso.
Thank you, honorable speaker. And I'd like to thank your excellency the Prime Minister. Our country Ethiopia in the past four years exhibited several developmental activities. Even though there are internal and external factors, the government is fighting against enemies and also trying to respond to the developmental questions of the public. And also working on institutional development and any forms. And conducted admirable activities. And the planned budget year. The budget is unique from the past years and it exceeds the previous year by sixteen percent. And there are several developmental questions of our country, road, clean water and electricity. The coming year two thousand fifteen is believed to respond to the questions of the people. Honorable Prime Minister. Our country Ethiopia is one of the countries that has several hydroelectric power resources. And relatively, there are changes and improvements in the provision of electricity. And focus has been given to make sure that it's accessible to Waradas and Kabalis. However, in all the regions of our country and in Waradas, there are enormous problems in the provision of the service. Going back to our community. The Sidama people has questions related to interruption of electric power. Four days, ten to fifteen days. The electric power district does not conduct continuous maintenance. So that also is causing death and injuries to the public. As a region of Sidama, we only have one substation and so it has become difficult to provide the service to all. Because of the mentioned challenges, we're facing several economic challenges. Further, the industries. It's challenging for the industries and development of infrastructures in the region. And businesses are facing challenges because of lack of power. So what is planned in that area, if you can explain more? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Kamal Hashi.
Thank you, honorable speaker. Honorable Prime Minister Dr. Abi Ahmed. Thank you for being here among us to respond to the questions of the House. And I thank you on behalf of the people of Ethiopia. The national reform is paramount, has a paramount role to responding to years-long questions of Ethiopia. And recently, when you gave a briefing on the current affairs of the country, we understood the activities. However, today, we I ask what the government has to say to groups working on the media requesting for transitional governments. And what is the government doing to ensure the accountability of the media, causing, descending the country to further catastrophes? Thank you. Next is honorable Mr. Bartam Afagadu.
Thank you, honorable speaker. I'd like to give you a comment to the Prime Minister if it's possible. We have several agenda, so if you can go to your questions. Thank you, honorable Prime Minister. Thank you for being here to respond to the questions of members of the House of People's Representatives. The country is working to ensure economic development through the agricultural sector. This sector is registering remarkable results recently. Looking at the production of wheat, we can see what we can produce in the rainy season. Working on adjacent lands, the works on adjacent lands is also impressive. However, to modernize the agriculture, it's important to increase, enhance research and research institutions. However, these research institutions do have budget constraints and limitations with instruments, lack of policy support. And gaps in building the capacity of researchers. And this has resulted in lack of results in the area. If there is anything in the area, if you can explain and what's planned as well. One of the authorities provided to the House of Federation is to allocate budget and transfer it to the Ministry of Finance. And the major indicator is population size. But without having census in the past years, do you think it's just to follow the allocation in place? And there are budgets allocated. And what are the enabling factors to conduct census? Thank you. Thank you. Next is Miss Honorable Geetahun Lemane.
Thank you, honorable speaker. Thank you, Excellency Prime Minister Dr. Abi Ahmed. I'll present my questions as follows. My question starts with the implementation of projects. The first one is related to the Renais dam that has been started with the participation of all the people. And this project has the aim of taking Ethiopia out of poverty. And it's a uniting project. So where is it? With the construction budget and time? The other one is related to sugar projects. Where are they? Relating to Koisha project, what are the progresses? The other one is related to concrete asphalt roads construction. What's the level of execution? Honorable Prime Minister, in Achafara area. Inaugurated the construction of road in the area. Where a Chinese ZCC construction started its work. But the project taken by the construction has failed. So if you can take note and follow that up. Following that, starting from Adisaba to Gologo, the asphalt road is not up to standard. And if a train can also be planned in that route. Achafara and the four people would like to thank you for your efforts in the area. And we'd like to also know more about the port activities we started in partnership. The other one is related to the Green Legacy projects. What about the progress in that area? Thank you. Next is Honorable Sister Samira Mohammed.
Thank you, honorable Speaker. Thank you to honorable members of the House. First of all, I'd like to thank His Excellency Prime Minister Dr. Abi Ahmed for coming here to respond to our questions. And I'll present my questions as follows. In the two thousand fourteen budget year, there has been a growth in the GDP by six percent. As we can see from the draft proclamation, the coming year's budget is bigger and it will achieve the plans we have. The audit findings of the two thousand fourteen, the previous year, shows that the budget consumption of the different ministries is critical. So what kinds of system should be provided? And taking the context of the country, how should we utilize our budget? The other one is with your leadership, without being affected by the many challenges we see in the country. Many projects are being implemented. From among these projects, industrial parks, Koeshia Wenchie, Gorgora and Unity Park, Science and Technology Museum and the likes have been shortly completed and can be mentioned. In West Harar Geyzon, many projects have been implemented. For example, schools are opened. However, asphalt roads from Geberti to Machara has been started seven years ago and was supposed to be completed in four years' time. However, it has not been open to work. Therefore, Honorable Prime Minister, the people is affected every rainy season. The people of Harar are mainly in economic activities related to chat production and sell. We know that chat is a main source of foreign currency. But the city is affected by infrastructure challenge. And having that in mind, what are the plans of the government to solve this problem? Thank you. Next is Honorable Mr. Afegadu Garshalu.
Thank you, honorable Speaker. And Prime Minister of FDR, I thank you very much on behalf of Ethiopian people for coming here to respond to our questions. I'll start with the Constitution articles. According to Article fourteen, sixteen and thirty-two of the Ethiopian Constitution, every person has the right to live and to be protected from any bodily injury and to move freely and leave anywhere in the country. In Article thirteen of the Constitution, any government institutions of all levels should protect and respect the rights of citizens. However, because of the war waged by TPLF on top of these rights being violated, the people of Ethiopia have been able to secure the sovereignty of the country with its zealous resistance and your leadership. I have big respect for that. Despite internal and external challenges, we have seen reform activities and results in the country. The law enforcement activities together with the regional security apparatuses are also commendable. However, the participation and contribution of each and every member of the public to the efforts of the government and the security is important. Therefore, all members of the public and members of the House should understand that these conflicts we see in different parts of the country are results of seeds planted in the past thirty years and we should stand to secure the peace of the country. However, security is the main role of the government. Recently, citizens in different parts of the country are losing their lives, losing their property and are being displaced and spending time in torture. Especially the acts of the terrorist Onaksheni in Darashi, Guji, Amaro and Guji areas and in Benishangut, Gumus, Gambella and in Noromia in West Wallaga is taking lives of citizens, honorable Prime Minister. These attacks on citizens, why is it difficult to stop these attacks together with the public and the community? And how long will this group continue to be a threat to the country? And how can we dissociate the public from and administration from the attitudes of Onaksheni? And what are the directions of the government? This is because if these groups find shelter in the public, it will make the measures being taken difficult. How can we cut the ties between groups working to destroy the country? And what are the plans of the government to sustainably solve these issues? And also in relation to using alternatives outside of war, what are the plans? Thank you. Following this, I will give the chance to His Excellency the Prime Minister to respond to the questions of the members of the House.
Thank you, honorable Speaker. I also want to thank members of the Parliament for giving me the opportunity to respond to your questions. First of all, for those that lost their lives in inhuman acts of violence, I want to express the deep sorrow that I feel. The citizens are innocent, have nothing to do with whatever political reason. They've been minding their daily lives, their daily business. But these destructive evil forces, the attacks they did is quite reprehensible and quite sad. And as a government, as people, the fact that we're not able to prevent the attacks, we feel quite sad. Ethiopia in the past, as many of you have said, not only the violence within the country, but been helping to assist, to come up with solution in other countries. But the general geopolitical situation, the current general geopolitical situation in Ethiopia, maybe every month or every week, but for us, every hour, every minute, we hear bad news. As a result of this, our security forces and the government is doing our level best to combat such threats. But to the questions, when is this going to end? The answer is anybody that spills innocent blood, any group that spills innocent blood, be it Sheni or any other terrorist group. If we continue in the path that we're in, they will be destroyed because they do not have any viable purpose. They are just destructive. They will challenge us, but they will not defeat us. How can we stop such an act? I will go to it in detail later, but in general, these evil forces, they may be able to kill our citizens and create disruptions, but will not stop us from our main goal. But the killing in Ethiopia, as some people said, they said the government has been negligent and has been irresponsible. It should not be taken like that. The government is working twenty-four seven to save the life of its people. And as a result, it's been able to save lots of lives. It's true that we have lost citizens. First of all, all the destructive forces, members of the security forces are losing their lives. It's costing the lives of security forces. Recently, the reports have been given to the Parliament by security forces. Daily, police officers die, soldiers die. At the Rashe only, police in Waradal, over more than eighty have died. Same in Gambella, Dambitolo, Gimby. In Amaro area also, police members have been killed inhumanly. Soldiers, special forces give their very lives to save the citizens. Honorable Parliament need to know that on a daily basis, the police members do not get any special benefit. They have a very low salary. Apart from that, they work in a very difficult situations like in Wallaga in a muddy groundwork. They go on foot for lack of adequate infrastructure. So they walk on foot on difficult road to ensure the security of citizens. So the security forces that serve the country at high cost, the Parliament must recognize their efforts and honor their efforts. Maybe you always focus on the losses and maybe are not aware of the lives saved as a result of the efforts of the security forces. Your children, the youth, the security forces are paying dear lives. As long as they continue combating such forces, evil forces will not be able to disrupt our path towards development. Concerning terrorism, terrorism currently is a global challenge. There is an environment challenge, there is a problem of inflation and economic relationship. But terrorism stands out as a global challenge. It's not particular to Ethiopia. We should not think like that. And a global fara, it's been tabled as a primary agenda. The multifaceted types of terrorism. And how can we collaborate to save our citizens? This agenda seems to be number one in international forum. For instance, globally, countries with the strongest, with the country with the strongest security forces, the US. There's no other country with a stronger law enforcement agency like the United States of America. What US faced in New York, let's set that aside. In two thousand twenty, only in the United States of America, at least twenty thousand people have died as a result of terrorism. The number could be bigger. Armed people have killed more than twenty thousand people in the United States. In the past six months only, from January to June. In this past six months, in the city of Los Angeles, one hundred seventy-two people have lost their lives. It's not California, it's the county of Los Angeles and its neighboring cities. Two hundred twenty-four have died in the past six months. In Philadelphia, in the past six months, two hundred fifty-four people have died. Washington DC, capital, one hundred twenty-four have died. Does not include the neighboring cities like Baltimore. New York City, one hundred ninety-seven people have died. Chicago, three hundred people have died in general, in the United States in the past six months. Thousands of people have been shot dead by terrorists. The US and developed nations, anybody can use firearm and kill people. And some say I should not live here and commit suicide. The number again is quite high. It's a global problem. Suiciders are under increase, that armed people go kill children, women, and they're powerless. It's not the problem of the US and Europe only, but it's a global problem. It's nothing special. In Ethiopia, it must not be depicted as a failure on our security forces. And recently, in a meeting we had, dealt with terrorism as being a challenge in all corners of the world and on mechanisms of combating it collectively. Terrorists must not be linked only with ethnicity. We should not, otherwise it would be a partial understanding. For instance, Al-Shabab, it's not to say hundred percent. Most of the leadership of Al-Shabab are Somalis. They're Muslims of faith origin. Ethnically, they're Somalis. Most of them speak Somali language. However, but in Somalia, Kenya and sometimes in Ethiopia, their campaigns among those that Al-Shabab kill, most of them are Somalis. Somalis. In order to destroy Al-Shabab, the government of the US, Kenya, Ethiopia, Somalis, we have worked together in the past decades. Countries from many countries exist in Somalia. However, we cannot put the death rate to zero. Countries from many countries exist in Somalia, however, we cannot put the, the death rate to zero. Though the United States is giving assistance. But all these countries could not work together and stop al-Shabaab. We must have a proper understanding of terrorism. In Western Africa, especially Nigeria, Boko Haram, you know, the problem causes Nigeria. Be it population wise and economy. Is better than Ethiopia, but the nature of terrorism and its destructive strategies. Just like the car, it's not like the, 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 the first phase of battle with TPLF. After we took over Magale, our enemies spread among the people in the past eight months. It was quite difficult in Boko Haram and is destroying, destroying Nigeria. Al-Shabaab works in East Africa, others in other parts of the world like in Yemen, this terrorist called Houthi. They, they tried to destroy Houthi. Houthi conducted, they, they shot rockets into Abu Dhabi airport. Houthi, if you compare it, it's not any stronger than the security forces of the United Arab Emirates. From Yemen all the way to Abu Dhabi. It, it managed to attack not on itself, but with the help of others, so Shani and other terrorist groups. They don't have a leg of themselves, but there are others that give them legs, so they use those legs to conduct destruction. They don't have their own mind to think, but when they are given commissions, they would do that. For instance, recently, when we look at the current attacks, in my opinion, evaluation. From Wallow. In the year seventy-seven Ethiopian calendar, people moved to Wallaga. Like if they went there at the age of five, seven, now that person will be around forty, adolescent. So though he was born in Wallow, he's been aged four, five years in Wallow, but he's lived in this area. More than thirty years, he grew up, married, he produced where they live now. As you know, human beings. Call a country, they call the, the, the rivers, the mountains, their village, this or this people who came to this. Land when they were four and five. So they cannot have a history of where they were born. Actually, it's where they are now that they call their country, so killing such people in an inhuman manner. Would not have any, would not have any political goal. It will not succeed rather in achieving political goal. We can engage in killings. But killing innocents is the, is the nature of terrorism. In order to dismantle and disintegrate the country, that's the desire behind it. The problem we have here is when the government. We say it's the primary goal, but responsibility of government is to ensure peace and security, you're right at that. And people's responsibility is to support the government it elected. When the government designs their policy, gives information, gives ideas, the people, if they listen and, and follow, then we can stop many. But there's nobody that is listening now, everybody's given direction. With a very limited information and knowledge that it says, everybody is, is prescribing directions. And this would further lead us down the path of destruction. We have to understand first of all the nature of terrorism and more or less. The government has more information than the general public, it's, it's good to be aware of this. Recently. Our defense forces and security forces, as I have observed in the past fifteen, twenty years. And they've been, and are put in a, in a much better situation standing currently. You have looked at that, the general people, the, the general people have not shown that, but you have looked into that. Why did we give priority to strengthen law enforcement agencies? Because we know that terrorist attacks have a desire to dismantle us as a nation. Recently. They have a plan at Asosa today, today. This week. They have, six times their plan have been foiled in Addis Ababa. When a Muslim go to celebrate our father, they put on a Muslim with an explosive. Ethiopian Defense Forces. However much we try to strengthen it, we do not have a hundred million soldiers, our, our citizens are a hundred million. We cannot assign one soldier for every citizen when we protect this area, another area will be left unprotected. And it's those that speak our language, that look like us, are being destructive. So it's true, it's the people's priority to ensure peace and security, but it is also the primary responsibility of the people. Let's work together, let's not just be posing questions, but let's assume responsibility as citizens. Like in the western nations, senior, senior citizens. In their retirement years. The first thing they do is when, when they see something peculiar, they, they tip the police. And earlier, when they see something strange. They report to the government. Alec Arida, when they destroyed the, the twin. Buildings. The people stood by the side of the government. Earlier, when children are shot in schools, as you know, when children die, everybody is dismayed. But they stand with the government to fight the terrorists. But here, anytime people die, people point fingers at the government, this is not, this is not right. The government is not a terrorist, rather it's an, it's a body that fights against terrorism at the cost of life. The, the, the role of the people is identify the terrorists. And work to combat it. The problem we face in this regard is the, the challenges we face, others, the way we see the challenges of Ethiopia is different. Challenges of Ethiopia has various perspective, but can fall under two major spectrums. The first one is Ethiopia. Its contribution to the world, we Ethiopians is not like what we think. This has caused problems, for instance, earlier on, I mentioned the problem of the US. Because Ethiopians that live in the US, they know such problems because it occurs on a daily basis in their cities. But they have two problems, on the one hand, Ethiopians in Europe and the US. When they hear the situation of Ethiopia from afar. They think that there is no positive thing going on, there's no work being done within the country. They think that their brothers and sisters are dying on a daily basis, they just hear evil, terrible news, they lack the. Their peace, they cannot sleep at night because listening evil news from afar is, is terrible. So what these people must know is they should come as much as possible and see for themselves. And compare what's going on with what they've heard, because they usually hear the bad stories. So they, they must come and see the situation on the ground, on the ground and give their own individual. Evaluation and also they must be cognizant of the fact that such problems do exist in the, in the country of the residents. And that the people and the government work together against evil forces, so they should explain this to the people within Ethiopia. As I've said earlier, the contribution of Ethiopia for the world and. The potential of growth that Ethiopia has is an opportunity and a challenge at the same time. Its contribution to the world, we can have four spectrums, one is historical, we Ethiopians. Though we, 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 we focus too much on our differences, but when the world looked at us. They said, they agree that Ethiopia is the source of civilization. Or it is among the few countries that are considered the source of civilization. This, we are not giving it its value, but the developed countries do not have such a historical legacy. Most of them do not have such historical legacy, not only that, but most agree that Ethiopia is the source of humanity. The research on humanity always includes Ethiopia. So they give a huge place in history, apart from that. Thousands. More than fifty thousand ancient books. Are all over libraries globally, more than hundred thousand historical heritages. Live globally, ancient writings are there. So when history is looked into, Ethiopian heritage are found in their libraries, their books are. Looked into by various researchers, so they cannot disregard Ethiopia, when they come here, they see things tangibly, that they see Lalibala. We cannot find such a heritage anywhere else in the world, Sophoma. You cannot find Sophoma everywhere in the world, it's a huge sign of civilization. And also Ak Som is there. So Ethiopia, not only in writing, but things are there visible within the country. Honorable parliamentarians. If you go to developed countries, you will not find such evidences of historical heritage, ancient historical heritage. We, we are not valuing it, but the world does value it, when we talk of literature. Only eighteen countries have their own alphabets, among them, one is Ethiopia. The only country in Africa, the story looking at it is quite significant. There are countries that want to derode such a historical wealth. Because wealth is always connected with history, for instance, in our country. Some people can become rich overnight. People speak against it, this is of demonic origin, people demean such wealth. People that have, that have always been wealthy and people that have suddenly become wealthy will not be looked in the same way. But people do not honor that because they became wealthy overnight, they will not even marry with such people. But even, even when we look at other country, when a country becomes wealthy with no history behind it, it's not given much of a respect. So this historical thing must be thoroughly understood by our people in the seventeenth century. The James Bruce historian, and after he came here. He took fifteen camel, camel load, not food, not snacks, not water. But historical heritages, including books in Africa. For, for our endeavors, forces that want to weaken us as a nation. That's why I said it is an opportunity and a challenge at the same time. We can also go ahead and talk of other things based on history, the second one is natural resources. Do not forget, we've not been colonized. So we've not been exploited as much as colonized countries, though we're not making use of the natural resources. One is our climate, like the climate that you see in Ethiopia in Addis Ababa. If you go in our neighboring, neighboring countries, you will not find such a climate or weather condition, it does not exist. This weather condition, we've not worked for it, it's a natural property, it's a natural wealth, grace, fresh water, including rain. The fresh water that we have, our neighboring countries will not access it, let alone distant countries in the world. Huge rivers containing fresh water, quite small, one, one is in Ethiopia. Fertile land, huge fertile land. It's quite there here, wild life is huge variety, with variety, all these. Though we do not pay much attention to this, but globally, they have huge meaning. Even in botanical resources, they say there are more than sixty thousand diversity from six thousand to seven thousand. Are, are found in Ethiopia or only found in Ethiopia. Just look at the share we have in, in botanical resources, so these natural sources in comparison with our population. If they, if they grow and harness our potential, there are some countries that are threatened by that. And the third leads politics and diplomacy, initially, somebody has raised this, we are a free country, we've not been colonized. And this is not vain speech, and this has been attained by the blood and booms of many in the country. Many have failed to succeed at that, developed countries, all of them have been colonized. One time or the other in the past, be it in Asia, America, and also in Africa. The fact that we've not been recognized, not only that we talk, we raise it again, but this is a huge diplomatic point. But not only that, but we have, we have had a significant contribution to see the liberation of colonized countries. Most of the free African countries have been trained in there, in, in Ethiopia. We have repeatedly said that Mr. Mandela has received a military training in Colfe in Ethiopia. This is politically speaking, apart from politics. When he was leading a football federation. Has fought that such colonizers will not take part in global soccer forums. It's not only the government, even individuals when they get a global forum, they have fought for the independence of their brothers. The nation of Tanzania in the eastern part of Africa. When Tanzania became independent, its neighboring country Mozambique was still under the colony of Portuguese. This is like sixty, seventy years ago. After Tanzania became independent, Tanzania could not defend its air territory. The air force at Mozambique crosses Tanzania. So they pass this, they're, they're, on the air, they threaten them. But Ethiopian Air Force, one squad was sent to the country of Tanzania with Ethiopian Air Force fighters. So they secured the Tanzanian air borders, some of them are still alive in the Air Force members. When we talk of Tanzanian independence, it's the country that secured the air integrity of border of Tanzania. This is history that would be raised politically and also diplomatically. that would be raised politically and also diplomatically. When these Ethiopians went to Tanzania, the Tanzania is never so black pilot. So when Ethiopian airlines pilots take off, many people would go out and see them fly. So our contribution in Africa cannot be undermined. In the League of Nations, Ethiopia is the only country in Africa uh that was there when the League of Nations was established in the The same goes for the African Union. In Korea also, the Ethiopian troops sacrificed their lives in 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 Korea as well. In Congo, at the time where no other African countries were imagined, Ethiopia participated. This is what we recall in the diplomacy, in the politics of our country. Many do not raise these issues, these topics. Outside of politics, in the social sector, we have a social capital we never measured. When people die. There is no other country that goes out in mass to bury individuals. When an elderly dies, many would find taxi, cars, also go on foot to regions to give their respect. This is not a joke. In developed countries, when fathers and mothers get sick, people will hire nurses to take care of them. And when they die also, they say they don't have time and so ask the government to bury them. They're unable to look after their parents. Cannot even attend the funeral of their parents, but has money. These countries allocate budget, ministries, create propaganda to go back and build their social capital. But it's impossible to bring it back. It's ruined for them. But we have this with us. It shows us that we also participate in unity. I will not mention names, but there are countries that protected the sovereignty of their countries, countries that never had problems recruiting soldiers are now saying, well, we should hire from Africa. The resources we have, um we don't look at the big picture because we take reference from outside. We assume that the measurement for growth are the indicators outside. For instance, Idir, without having any legal backing, people transact. This is not an easy asset. The same applies for Okon. After someone is buried, neighbors go and support the families. This only takes place in Ethiopia. In other countries, it's only the case where they take white flowers and pay their respect. When the person goes back from work, from the 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 funeral, has to open his fridge and cook his food. No one goes there to support him. Our asset, respecting our elders, we still have it. And when they talk about our country, they say you love your country, you support and love your families. The diaspora, as much as possible, worry about their families back home. They are responsible. And they say, well, our people are not the same. Historical, cultural, social assets are the ones that I mentioned. But what they want to talk about us is about um poverty, about terrorism, about killings. When you, when when they talk about Ethiopia, they tell us what we want to know, to be told about our country at the bad aspects. But it has its own challenges and opportunities. The other one is the potential Ethiopia has to grow, to change. We talked about our human resources. Many youth we have that can work. And many other countries do only have elderly, aged members. And they got to where they got because of their fathers or previous generations. The new generation um could not cope up and continue with the growth. Human resource, natural resources, underground resources shows us that Ethiopia can change if you work hard. This has again its own challenges and opportunities. And enemies take all sides to weaken us. It's not only physical, but with many other aspects. The current conflicts taking place in Ethiopia are gray. It's not black or white. It has a gray characteristics. I'll focus on the gray war. The first one is information war. For instance, in Wallaga, one Kabali, one district, if someone dies tomorrow, many information actors know about it. And the international media reports it. While we're working to send, you know, defense forces and react, they start immediately with the information warp. But this will not happen when it comes to the green legacy or the wheat production we're taking place, that's taking place in the country. This gray war is difficult for our country to combat because it's coordinated. The country tries, but it's not easy. The second one is diplomacy, has been um discussed earlier. Every day, I I don't want to exaggerate the number, but in developed countries, there are killings with great numbers. In total, the number of people who died in Ethiopia in the past year compared to the previous countries I talked about is much lesser. But outside of what the local media talks about, it will not reach us. And you see the countries that are having more people dying in their cities, with their children dying, without having the resources or without stopping that, they talk about our agenda. There are many ways to this. The other one is the cyber war. I talked about it last time. It's increasing. The fourth one is a proxy war. When a country has traitors, they fight the proxy wars. These traitors will try to kill their own family, their own people. The current there are areas that are selected to tackle the works in the country. Especially creating conflicts between the Oromo and the Amara. Second one is creating conflicts between the Amara. And third one is creating conflicts within the Oromo. And the fourth one is the conflict between Afar and Somali. And the fifth one is between Sidama and Somali. Sixth one is having conflicts between Benishangul with Amara and Oromo. Outside of that, religious, Muslim, Christian conflict. When that becomes difficult, creating conflicts between, within the Muslim and within the Christian religions. Before you hear about issues in Sidama, the government will go and take actions. And then Isay and Afar start conflict. Then the government runs there. Then you hear about Benishangul, the Amara and so on. These are done using information war through diplomacy, through traitors. There are big campaigns. It has been difficult to destroy the country, however. If it becomes difficult, the final one is to organize uh forces and wage war. Using context. The Honorable House, what I want to assure you is that no country no country can fight with Ethiopia, win or destroy the country. They might kill, might create conflicts, could put economic pressures. They've done this in our history. Despite all economic pressures, despite creating conflicts and killings within the country, they cannot succeed in destroying our country. It has never been successful with our forefathers today and will not be successful in the future as well. However, it doesn't mean that we'll sit quiet. Um there are many doors. They create challenges in all directions. Some say when Ethiopia is attacked by all sides, groups that we never heard of will try to trade using people's death. When war was waged against us, when all these pressures were put against us, it would have been great had they supported us. We we have traitors in Addis Ababa, not only Shinny. With that context, our enemies will get power, more resources. With these holistic attacks and gray wars, we understood the context. So what we should do on our country was strengthening the law enforcement, the defense force, the police and the intelligence. And as much as possible, we tried to make four principles in these institutions. The first one is ethnicity. No one exists without a a ethnic group. However, when they join the defense force, they should not use the institution as an instrument of their ethnicity. Even though we don't name them, even though their ethnicity is their individual identity, they have to respect the oath and the constitution. And we have to create an institution that's independent of ethnicity. Second one is religion. Ethiopians do have religions. Many are either Christian or Muslims individually. But their individual beliefs should not be taken into the defense force. We don't say they should not believe in their religions, but they should not affect the belief of the defense. The third one is attitudes. We all have our own different attitudes and they should not affect others with their attitudes in the institution. They may have their own political attitudes, but they should not use it to affect the institution. Fourth one is it should not there should be a training to make sure that they should not um affect the country for their personal benefits. You have seen this with your naked eyes. The defense force we have today cannot be compared with the previous defense force by any measurement. We're conducting a high level capacity building, as you see this in all the institutions. It's not only for today, but it takes into consideration future generations as well. It has technology. This is to make sure that if many go out of line, we should create an institution that can save Ethiopia. Because of the reasons I mentioned earlier, we fear that we might be vulnerable to groups that want to affect, attack Ethiopia. Accordingly, the defense force have been successful up to ninety five percent, the least. It should reach up to hundred percent, of course. The police, the intelligence crew by many. The police go forty thirty kilometers on foot to protect citizens. That's the capacity it has. In Darashe alone, around eighty police and cadre members died. They don't have any special benefits. So we have to strengthen that. What the Honorable House should remember and understand is that when an incident reaches you and when it's also taken care of in the area, the number gap is huge. For example, in the Epiphany last year, twenty two thousand areas, the celebration took place in the country. The only challenge we faced was in Weblamara, only one place. You don't hear anyone talking about the twenty one thousand places in the country. The youths celebrated and they were protected in those twenty one thousand areas. Police was there in all these twenty one thousand places and were successful. But in one area, it didn't succeed, but that should also be rectified. In the Ramadan Eid, in Oromia alone, more than eight thousand eight hundred Jumma Sala took place. Afar Somali, it's a wider area, Amara region in East Amara as well. In thousands of areas, it was conducted peacefully. There were problems in Addis Ababa, in Moscow Square. Everyone in the country that participated in the celebration talk about Addis Ababa and they do not talk about the protection they were provided. Every day, we face problems. The defense forces go all over the country to respond to these attacks. And sometimes these enemies mix themselves with the community and cause catastrophes. And what we expect for the house and for the people to first identify is identify enemies. We have to come together and follow directions to respond to our enemies. If we become suspicious against one another, whenever an incident takes place, we open doors for foreign enemies. What I want the House to understand is that in Addis Ababa alone What I want the House to understand is that in Addis Ababa alone, there are wider desires. We're doing a lot of work to protect the peace of the city. We're catching bombs, weapons, terrorists and so on. Yesterday, before yesterday, we captured people. We captured fifty-five people in La Getafe in three days alone. You don't see terrorists shooting at this house because we have protections outside. If we have security forces everywhere, it would be great. We'd minimize the problem, but Ethiopia cannot do that. Not even the United States of America. We have hundred thousand soldiers for a hundred million people. So we can't say there cannot be a problem. So what is the plan of the government? How do you wish to work and what are your strategies? We have a clear strategy in place. We have the four Ps in English. And Aratuma Ena Maharik. That's how we are working to defend and sustain Ethiopia. The first P is prevent. So work of prevention. As I said earlier, strengthening institutions by awakening the public, we have been able to save many lives, but it's not complete. We should not only be proud of what we achieved, but we have to work more. We have to strengthen our institutions, we have to awake the public ask. And we have to identify destructive forces and groups. If we do that, we can increase the protection aspect. The second P is pursue, to conduct follow-ups. When something happens in Wallaga, it's not, it's not the end. Gambella continues, Gondar continues. It only changes names. So we have to continuously follow up. We have seen that wider activities have been undertaken to do that. We still need to put more effort. There are times where we receive information and could not reach to respond on time. Other times, we receive false information. Third one is protect. We protect vulnerable projects, institutions, areas. And we organize the people in different areas and provide support. That's what we continue to do. Fourth one is to prepare. To prepare every day. When we hear people die, we should not cry about it and forget in the weak time. So we have to prepare every time for the next challenge. As a country and as an institution. To counter the strategy and to compete the strategies, there are activities undertaken by our enemies. They buy or purchase people in the structure. These people will plan together and destroy our work. I said this last time as well. In the past two months, we have identified five thousand people and took action. Some are de-promoted and arrested as well. This is not a result of a hearsay. We have enough information and we act based on information. In case of Shinny as well, attacking on one hand and protecting on the other side. We have better information in that regard. Once they attack uh, on one side and they use members to campaign to also weaken from the inside. We know this. They cannot trick us using that structure. The second one is an integrated media campaign. We talked about it as well. One of the means to achieve gray wire is media. The world talks at a time. And there are individuals within the country that believe that the government wouldn't do anything to them. They say whatever they want and receive their money from outside. We'll take law enforcement actions. Third one are traitors. Traitors existed at the time of the occupation of Italian forces as well. Ethiopia never had problems with traitors. Enemies has always been using divisions and traitors within the country. We have traitors living in the coun- in the city and others carrying clashing coffs. We have traitors working for NGOs as well. That are worried about their own agenda. We fight that as well. For example, take drought for instance. The drought we faced in Sumali and Afar areas was worse than what we faced in the past forty years. Forget the forty years. In two thousand nine Ethiopian calendar, in Sumali region, the drought we uh faced and the drought we faced this year cannot be compared in terms of the zone it covers, in terms of the cattle affected and its intensity. This one is far worse, far bigger. Those of you from Sumali understand this. In two thousand nine Ethiopian calendar, international institution provided support to Sumali region. In two thousand fourteen, the past year, they did not even provide quarter of that support. Without any support, the government and the people of Sumali regions and the people from different regions and the support of the federal government, not even a single person died from a drought. In two thousand nine, more than hundred people died. We have been able to save people, but only with the days of cotton because regions and the government uh supported each other. Economy, I talked about it earlier, but the major point is that we're being challenged. We're paying sacrifices every day. We're passing through unbelievable incidents. But we're getting stronger every day. We're learning every day. What we want to tell to our enemies is that the government of Ethiopia believes in the resilience and the reform of the country and if necessary will pay sacrifices. And it cannot be destroyed. If necessary, I'll repeat, we'll take sacrifices. Nothing stops us from the objective of prosperity. I'm not saying we have not been tested, but we will not lose to it. There are people who are constantly deceived by this. But everyone has their own capacity and strength. But the major factor is that we should be stronger and we're getting stronger following this challenge, even though we're burying people. We have children and peaceful citizens dying. Forget the ethnicity of the people who died recently. Imagine if, if they were your kids, your children were killed in schools, who will sleep at night? But we will win in the end. We're walking uphill. Moving forward is quite near, the destination is near, but the journey is very difficult. It takes hard work, unity and collaboration. Going backward is quite far, but very easy because it's downhill. Doesn't need much of a strength and much of collaboration. If we just slip, neglect our work, we'll go back. But the other one, we need to push forward in a collaborative manner because it's an uphill journey with parliamentarians and those who love the countries and citizens. They will want, the question I pose to you is if possible, the up, uphill forward movement, help the country, push the country upward. This is, this is short but difficult journey. Push the country upwards. If you're not able to do that, if you do not have the capacity and if you're, if you cannot see afar, uh at least do something that it will not revert backwards. The, the third option is pulling the country backwards is the desire of our enemies. Do not collaborate with them. They want to see us disintegrate. Any peace-loving, country-loving citizens should not stand along our enemies. There are many challenges, many problems, yes, it's true, but Ethiopia is bigger than that. So let's stand firm together and push upwards. Let's not support the attempt of our enemies to dismantle our country. There are many traitors and, and, and some African countries. They have, they have been used of their enemies to dismantle their own countries. They are now left with remorse and destruction. Yemen, remorse and destruction. Libya, remorse and destruction. All those that have been used of evil forces to destroy their countries have left the country. If, if Ethiopia is dismantled, such embassies would quickly shut down their embassies and leave us alone. The problems would be left in our own hands. If possible, if you can, push the country upwards. If not, do something to stop the country going downwards. Do not judge the country to go downhill. If you do that, remorse and destruction that would affect the generations coming would be in your hands. Let's pause and think of these. Our enemies are like fox, a herd of fox. When, 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 when a single fox sees a herd of cattle, would not lurch to attack. What he does is first, it releases evil smell. When that evil smell, uh the, 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 the cattle would, would start to um to fight against one another. And when the evil smell gets worse, starts to hit the, the, the cattle next to it because it is used that you are, you are a fox, it says. It's the smell that creates suspicion when they start fighting each other. When then it's uh easy prey for the fox to attack. So creating conflicts with such a foul breath, then it would be successful in the attack. First is creating suspicion and division and uh sort of strife, then easily can do whatever he wants to do. And similarly, when people love in Wallaga, when activists Amara and Oromo fight each other, it quickly, those from the neighboring country start attacking right away, right away. Because they say if there is a division, then we can, we can uh get a upper hand over them. So unity. When there is prosperity, when it's convenient, whenever everything is okay, to be one is not, is not difficult, but during uh stressful times to decide to hold on to each other, that is, that is what being greatness is all about. It's during difficulty that we're supposed to stand together and make sure the country transitions forward and pay whatever cost it requires to do that. Martin Luther King, he said, if you can, let's stand as brother together or let, let's, let's die like fools together. This is the choice. That's in front of us, like brothers one people. Though we face challenges, let's stand together and cross over or let's uh destroy each other as fools. So Oromo politician. If, 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 if it brands Amhar as enemy, it's, it's to say that Oromo have decided to, to, to be without any relative. Uh, it's like I, Oromo, would stand against seven billion people. If an Amara brands Oromo as an enemy, what it means is among, uh I stand against the people of the world. If you cannot work with your neighbor, become an enemy with your neighbor, how can you be a friend with somebody afar over? Uh, an Oromo is an enemy of Amara, cannot be a friend of your money or society. The same works to Amharas. We should not be fooled. We are one family, we have, there's intermarriage. Not only that, even to live peacefully in neighbors must create peace. Because it's a neighbor that comes to your assistance in time of trouble, not your relative far over. So let's calm down, settle down, that we would avoid calamities. This being as the case, why is it that we are not holding terrorists accountable? Even the world have not yet taken all terrorists accountable. There's, there's, there's something that I want to caution the parliament. This parliament here comes up with laws. When it cuts a law, a, a legal provision, I should not be playing the role of a court. You're not judges. You don't court uh then the law. Your work is to legislate. Because there is another organ that enforces and you know the exact uh article of the law to court. You cannot just sit here and say this is the crime and this is the article that would disrupt chicken balance. And that will not uh have a positive role, I think. We need to engage in training also. I speak that from the heart because legislatures have a huge responsibility. You, you carry the responsibility of hundreds of thousands. You're not supposed to be judges and ministers. You are members of the parliament, but the parliament have a huge responsibility. For instance, in the past few years in Ethiopia, in connection with mass killings, not only the Shinny, but more killings. More than eighteen thousand people have been taken to court and most, most of them have been penalized. Even two years in connection with Hajal killing with what transpired in Shashamane. Uh up to nine thousand people have been apprehended. Among these, four thousand have been taken to court. Most of them have been found guilty and penalized. Our main purpose is to avoid unnecessary killings. In order to do that, when we fail to do that, we, we make sure that uh the culprits are held accountable. This is the fact on the ground showing that we're all for justice. Politicians in Ethiopia, activists in Ethiopia, when, when a killing occurs, they fill the air. But when the police forces are there for counterattack, they keep silent. But when the police forces are there for counterattack, they keep silent. When when people died in Shashamana, the air was filled when the police did its job and took them to court. Nobody is there to report the outcome of the court. This is one of our limitations. Incidentally, not only in politics, that's the, the problem with project is the same. They said, this this fraud, this project, the contract is signed, nobody follows up. But it's our initial voices that we focus at, but we don't see things through. That's our problem in the development and and also in the politics as well and. And an elder, they say an elder was about to die. As you know, in the rural settings, people gather when somebody is about to die and the person would give his testament or his will. And he says, I have done my best to make sure that you are grown up. I'm about to go. But there's, I have a request for you. I know you'll not disappoint me. And the the kids were uh were shocked. They said, no, 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 do whatever you ask. Go, go ahead and make your request. The father said, it's not something big. What I want is when at the moment I pass away. And there's what they call for, for the day, the morning crying for the day, to make that in Hawasa. And there is an appointment of of crying culturally and do that in Gonder. Appointment, morning or crying in Gonder, and bury me in the Red Awa. That was his request. And my memorial should be placed in Adis Ababa. The kids were shocked. If they could, they would have done it. But this distance places like crying in Hawasa are going to Gonder for appointment to cry. And burial in Red Awa, and also the memorial in Adis, they were in a lot of stress. And the father said, oh, you are worried. I know you are not able to do that. But just tell that I have asked such a request, making known to the people around. The activists of Ethiopia are like that. It's, I had, I had said this. Mind you, I had said this. This is the only thing that they see. So it's just a Facebook talk. If it is for the people, you should do follow up. Go to Wallaga. And find out the problem yourselves. It's not difficult to sit here and make questions. Let's get out of this. Let's not say things for the sake of saying things. Let's do whatever we can to see. Uh stability of the country, not like that, that elder that could be a topic of conversations over coffee. And second, to denounce Shanay, they say, you show reluctance to denounce Shanay. First of all, honorable speaker, do not, do not bring a hearsay here. This is a huge forum. How can you say there is a hearsay like that? You can say, I noticed this, I say, I heard this, that's what you're supposed to say. I went and and examined myself. This, so hearsay should be over coffee, over chat, but here, you know, let's raise. Filtered out truth. So I cannot respond to hearsay. But there is thinking, I know. The first one is. This is not the parliament that designated Shanay terrorist. You are not there. Do not act as if it is you who have branded Shanay terrorist. It's the former parliament. So do not pretend that you are, you are the one that gave. Uh it is us who designated Shanay terrorist, but we've, we're, we're fighting on a daily basis. What's the use of branding it as terrorism? We're fighting it on a daily basis. Those who have ethnic problems. Do not think that Shanay represents only the Oromo. Shanay is the number one enemy of the Oromo. In the, in the, in the, in the preface, in the current killings, we have apprehended those from. The southern part of Ethiopia. Shanay does not constitute of only Oromo. Every anti-Ethiopia destructive forces gather up under its banner. They're trained everywhere in the world and join uh this evil force. Let me give you two examples. That indicates, that proves that Shanay is the enemy of Oromo. Recently, a certain father, an elder. During the current killings of in in Wallaga area. Oromo fathers have a kind heart, so they're, they get sick over such attacks. So he's angry that his son has become a member of Shanay. And that Shanay has hidden uh an arms and they reported the incident to the police. And the police apprehended the firearm. The son hears this. He comes with his friends, he closes the house, he ties up his father and burnt him alive. Such a young man, is he really a human being that burns his own father? Can he represent? Oromo, they are animals that kill whoever. How can you shoot at a child? Why did they become such animals? This requires research, but they do not have any political goal. If we give the the forum for Shanay to administer on, on what grounds can they lead that region? They do not have that goal. Their goal is to destroy the nation. Second, let me give you a second example. In Wallaga, in one family, a father. And the two of the sons, his sons have joined the national army and they have gone fighting. Uh and against the P L F, they've become soldiers. I don't know if they have the consent of the father. The father was killed for for the fact that two of his children have gone to fight for their country. They 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 didn't do anything wrong. They, this father was killed for the mere fact that two of his sons became soldiers. Some soldiers, some police heads and generals. Because they 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 fight against enemy, the members of the family have been killed. In Wallaga, hundreds of reports, uh reports have been given to you. Hundreds of Wareda leaders have been killed. It's not as easy as speaking in this forum. People die in the start of their duties. So Shanay is not representative of Oromo, it's a destructive force. Primarily, it is doing a lot of havoc against the Oromo. There is no development in Wallaga. No roads, no electric power. Who loses? It's people who are burned alive, killed. So this enemy is the enemy of all of us. If we look at it, that that will destroy it. But if you allow it, allow it to destroy us, to divide us, then we get weakened ourselves. Evil is evil. If somebody is evil to his own father, cannot benefit anybody. Concerning us. Thirty years, twenty seven, twenty eight years. From eighty one Ethiopian calendar. Uh during the reign of A P R Dave, but the four uh parties. For twenty years could not unite four parties. Cannot unite Ethiopia. During time of after we become a government. If we say you have similar programs, if they, if they fail to unite such parties. Ethiopia would have been dismantled. It was a matter of time. Because, because for years, the 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 question was, let's be one as a party. If it failed to become one as a party. Uh it could not bring a united Ethiopia. That's what we struggled against it after the the change. And and a very short man, not only in the time, not only for parties, but we incorporated other parties. They left their name and their banners and they joined us as one party. Because they believed in the unity of the country. Nobody forced us to do that. It is the staunch. Uh aim, goal that we have for unity. Those that want to speak, point fingers. Of ethnic orientation. First of all, be one first. And our program clearly indicates that we fight for our country. You cannot, you cannot accuse us of being ethnic. We are more than that. We're more than a village. We desire, we work for, to see the prosperity of the country. If you yourself are not, are not one, do not try to give it to us, it will not be proper. So we we branded Shanay before us. We are fighting it on a daily basis. We do not have a heart um for Shanay. However, honorable speaker, such groups like Shanay, not only Shanay, but other forces like Shanay. Their main desire is to to see that the parliament, parliament speaks of them, the media, the government speaks of them. That global media, they want attention in global media. If we continually speak of poverty, would, that would not lead us to prosperity. Sometimes we refer, because we do not want to do what they want us to do. But on a daily basis, we're fighting against them, actually on a minute by minute basis. We send forces to go die in defense of the country. So a hearsay would just be hearsay, but would not threaten me and also my party. We believe that all, we want to see Ethiopia, that every citizen enjoy equal rights. Shanay accuses us. They say Shanay, these people are not this, and the other Shanay also accuses us. We are Ethiopians. Trying to see all of our people to respect one another and benefit from the e- economy of the country. And come up with a strong country. In the process, we might make mistakes. So with the help of you. And also the help of our people and the prayer of our mothers will go forward, but we will not intentionally. Create conflicts between one ethnic group against the other. Or that one gets the upper hand against, it's not our moral standing. We don't do that. Extremists have two poisons. Whatever they are, extremists have two uh poisons. One is collective narcissism. Saying that it is mine is better, my song, my culture, my language is better apart from that. Totally useless. My land is fertile. I am like this, I, 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 I. That's an extremist primary attitude. It's a collective one. Like in our extremist era, if there is a mosque, they say. Our mosque was built on a Monday and they think it's better. He finds a reason to make sure that he's, the the second one is collective self pity. That's undue self pity, making oneself the center of everything. Yes, I myself, I'm in Ethiopia, I'm also a citizen. And I share the burden and the joys and the sorrows of the people. That's a healthy attitude, but if we exaggerated self pity. Would easily be ignited for evil work. So this two self pity. And also collective narcissism usually would tend to be destructive. So as a country, we should avoid such attitudes, so such symptoms. Uh easily, easily indications of extremism. Extremism has not benefited any part of the country. It will not be of any good to us. We should remove it and come up with a democratic state. Between democracy and and development, there is one difficult contradiction. Some say Ethiopia, Ethiopia's culture is not used to democracy. Our songs, our histories is domination. So how can you come up with a democracy that's not embodied in our culture? We should be firm, act firmly. Uh and it's like you should enforce the law forcefully. Some are of the opinion that we should go that route. The the reply that we have for them is beating down, abducting people, it's not difficult. It's quite easy actually. Beating down, torturing, we know what it looks like. But it does not go along prosperity and development. Honorable Atotagga say, when we, when we abduct him, maybe he's in our prison, his wife. His children, his friends are tortured in their minds, so on a daily basis. If we are brand one and then torture hundred people that are family members. That way we cannot go towards development. What we have is human resource, natural resource, as much as possible. We should create an atmosphere that people be free and happy to work. That is the contradiction between development and democracy. It's quite a tight road. If we do not come up with a democracy and allow people to voluntary works, we cannot come up with innovators. And also those that work hard will not be there. People would be disenchanted, disenchantment. Then would 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 not be of use for development. So how can we reconcile these two considerations? It's quite a challenge. That's what we're trying to do. Sometimes we get angry, sometimes we're big to come up with such a balance. The other one is that the demonstrations are banned. The 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 person who asked that was a peaceful demonstration, but when we are describing, says a person was. Was killed. Peaceful is to go out at a certain spot and speak their minds. That's what we learned from people that showed us how to do it. Because it it needs to be protected. Peaceful demonstration. Only when people are grieving and demanding why people are dead, even for a smaller cause, people speak out their grievances. This is not an undue issue or something that's not supposed to to raise anger. People have shed tears. That is something to be angry at and and but that demonstration must be peaceful. On the other hand, it's make sure that that people says, you should make sure that demonstrations are kept well and protected. But others join such demonstrations and try to create uh. Crimes, but you will not allow us to do our jobs. You know, there are so many interests in Adis Ababa. Any gathering of people, people with evil intent, so we need to protect our country. You should be aware of that. Um creating conflict between ethnicities and religious differences. Uh the people want to create problems. Incidentally, destructive forces, they kill people and when it is out in international media. More money would be sent to them. The more we speak, the more money they get. And the more armaments and equipments they get from international aid. So let's limit. Let's limit what we speak and do not speak for them. I believe the honorable house should understand this their overall objective is to kill to create conflicts again to kill. To create conflicts and eventually destroy the country. They have once been successful so we're just taking precautions so this doesn't take place again however. For the honorable house for the honor people of Ethiopia we have so many campaigns we should do in the coming two months. Then in September. We'll join another campaign. We have many enemies campaigning against us let them finish. Then we'll have our own campaigns after that. When you respond to their campaigns they kill somewhere else so it requires a little bit of thinking. We should not be predictable to our enemies if we're a predictable society then that's a destruction. Our people is known to be heroic. But if the enemies can easily predict us then it causes destruction. Many of them wrote this already they will activate it when something happens. We should not be predictable at one time when two countries. Two countries stayed together in harmony but eventually got into a conflict countries X and Y. So eventually they entered into a war and the citizens of Y. Do have a wealthy man from X people. So this wealthy man. They said we should. Destroy him because he's from the other people so they they started throwing stones at his businesses and he got out and started begging them. I came here when I was five years old I know your language I know your culture I'm one of you and. How do you assume I am from the other group and destroy and they say this is for our country. The person is not only that quick on his feet he also. Is very good he's not predictable and he said oh pardon me. At first I thought you wanted to destroy me but you came to protect your country then he said I'll pay you hundred bruh every day. Keep throwing the stones and they started receiving hundred bruh from him and threw stones. And the second day they came he said well I'm gonna give you fifty bruh today because I. My business is not working I can I give you more and they did the same third day they came back he said I'm sorry. I don't have money to pay you because the business has not been working then eventually they said well will not do it unless you pay us and they left. The main objective is to stop them from throwing the stones at at him. So he saved the remaining property so do not be predictable to your enemies. Say you will not fight against each other because of the campaign of enemies if you want you can do it by your own time. So we have to be composed. Regarding comments regarding transitional government. The member of the parliament who raised the question I see you from far but I believe you're young. This question of transitional government was in place since the time of the monarchy. The king in his last days. Has been challenged by groups about changing their cabinet by doing X and Y. Despite his efforts and changing prime ministers and so on he wasn't accepted. And dismantled his council after destroying the system. They weren't prepared on how to enter and lead. So other groups entered into power and led the country for seventeen years the conrel has never been um. Idle from attending the question of transitional government. They still continue to ask this question some of them are still alive. EPR Dave. Um has received later about transitional government for so many years. While they try to address that agenda people they never expected took power. So if there are still people talking about transitional government of course the house should accept their question. They call it whatever but will sustain the country they have never been successful at the time of the king. The Dirk EPR Dave and today they will not be successful. Because they do not understand the problem with dismantling structures. There has nothing to do with individuals whether this government goes away or not. It has nothing to do with the institution but they're worried more concerned about dismantling the structures but they don't know what to do after that. But never ever ruled a cabal or even an agency but they try to lecture you about you know leading. Therefore there was a political problem in Ethiopia. Government administration reform demand existed for that we did three things the first one is before an election. We created an independent internationally accepted electoral board. And to be led by a neutral body so new proclamation new resources. And it was established with the support of the house with that. Neutral body. We asked for election. And they said oh it's corona time there is no need for election. Since the incident of covid was immediate an emergency. Um prosperity. And all other parties decided to wait for another year and we looked at covid we saw it. How it affected us then eventually we said let's have election and some of them decided to participate and others said no. In the previous election the election you participated in in the history of Ethiopia. Is better in terms of it being democratic and the people of Ethiopia in the world knows that. Of course there are um problems in it and we believe that will have better elections in the future but I. At least it has been better than the previous elections we've had. People stayed out until midnight to give their voices. And we received prosperity received the required votes to. To take control of the government no party invites others of opposition parties. Even though transitional government is destructive we said we can work together. And so we invited opposition parties and three are members of the council. This is just an exercise to see if we have five or eight of them and see if we can work together. In this house the key um role is the coordinating committee. That sets agenda and discussed on what happens it's led by the speaker. If we have opposition parties we do not have the obligation to have them in that coordination body. It's our right in the law but that's not what we said we invited them. The reason we have them in the committee is to remain accommodative accommodating. The other role is having the standing committee. Members of the prosperity party do have the right to be leaders. And we invited others because we need to exercise working together planning together it's important. As their number increases tomorrow we'll have better experiences so instead of dismantling structures we should remain and continue working together. Thirdly there are political situations that are unanswered so we needed independent body that's participatory. As a committee and to have a national dialogue and it will talk about several other issues. And will democratically participate and hold dialogues within the community. That comes from our interest to respond to our issues. But if there are still people asking about transitional government I think they should be allowed. They've done it at the time of the king they've done it at the time of EPR Dave they're not they have not been successful and they'll continue. But what we want this house to know is that you have four years here no force. Has uh can overthrow this body. They cannot they don't even have the mandate. But we have to know that and we have we should not be limited by four years. We should not assume that we have enough time we have so many questions as a country. So we have to make sure that we do not create this after that and the public will give its decisions after four years. If people do not give us their voices we will step down. If the people wants us we'll continue if we work they will let us continue. So we shouldn't give that much attention to this question regarding negotiations. Let's say that the ruling party decided to hold negotiations to start with. The people of Ethiopia and the government. Will unequivocally give priority to peace. Will make decisions for peace and to war for our national interest. The unity and the interest of our country if we becomes difficult to secure it peacefully then we'll. Pay sacrifices with our lives outside of that if believe there are hopes our doors will remain open for peace. What's the wrong we did we just asked for negotiation and for peace. How do we hate peace? Second one. What this house should know is that prosperity party leads the country. It can discuss but the decision remains that of prosperity party. Four or five months ago we prepared an article. For all government employees supporters positioned to discuss on issues of peace. And I have the numbers millions of people participated in the discussions four or five months ago. You discussed on it yourself as well it's not uh an emergency situation. And we discussed about possibilities of solving this peacefully. This is because these forces in the country they do not have their own means. They will not bear fruit. Because we are having problems discussing and talking foreign enemies are benefiting. So if we have the resources we should have discussions being open to discussion is important regardless of the results. Like I said earlier you weren't here when there are proclaimed terrorist groups. But we do not negotiate with terrorists we should reconsider this. The dark used to discuss with EPLF and TPLF the Houthis while launching rockets. To Abu Dhabi they were under discussions and negotiations whether it's discussed or not or made public or not. Negotiations take place we do that to see if there are benefits from negotiations. The question should be about compromising the interest of the country. But if negotiations can solve problems it doesn't affect to open doors for it. On one side we talked about displacement problems and so on and on the other side if you do not allow us to try means of. Negotiation peaceful means it becomes difficult we have many forces better than us you think. The resources money we're fighting against them so if there are forces that will. Reconsider it through peaceful means we should take it regarding education in digitalizing education it's important. Education is important um to 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 generations. But assessments or examinations are assessments. They may shoot exams but we'll know about them in six months. They cannot sustain what they when they don't have bases. The students many students cheat in high schools and after they get to university they but they. They get kicked out in six months even if they sustain for two or three years they will find it difficult to graduate. Um that been the case with examinations we should work. On disciplines as well we've been talking about automation. Uh we've been working with the Chinese government to fully automate examinations we have softwares as well. But our examinations are for many many students and we need computers for that as well. And the organi- the the company that was contracted to. Provide that produce that could not do it because of covid we're still under negotiation. If it reaches we will use the technology to conduct examination otherwise. Uh we will use the traditional uh means through procedures. But the major idea is that has it has been raised because they want to use examination as. Context of politics Shani religion examination if we. Use all these as a political means um it will be difficult so we have to see it. Uh in the education sector by itself if we cannot be successful with the automation. We will change our mechanisms and we still try to avoid cheating. Regarding employment it's critical and so as this very house knows we have. An institution for employment not only that. We have a senior minister to lead the institution given the necessity. After that we tried to see the 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 system regarding recruitment training. And deployment after studying that around twenty eight processes took place. From recruitment to deployment they broke it down to fourteen. For example this year. Compared to the previous year's report there are differences last year it was about permanent and to temporary. And this year it's only permanent more than two million people are permanently employed. We did not include temporary employees within the permanent also we deducted fifteen percent. To solve problems related to data we have a center and secondly we have. Started automation development works as well. So we know people when people get jobs and lose their jobs. Using their phones and computers it will be completed last year when skills. Identifying. Having examinations to identify skills are also on the way we're also negotiating with countries. We signed with some of them and we're still under discussion with others. We are also sending experts nurses to. We are also sending experts, nurses to the Middle East and Europe as well. I believe it will be improved. Turkey has many use, educated use, and if we work on the system, we can create and get jobs in the country and abroad. To summarize the aspect of economy and to take break for ten minutes if allowed. Issues related outside of economy, we have been faced by several challenges and these challenges are making us stronger and should understand that they will help us grow. And my message is to create a country that will have its own agenda rather than following others' campaigns. Let's open new pages. Let's make the country green. An enemy tells us that you cannot plant trees while people are dying. We'll continue planting trees in areas where people are killed as well. We're planting trees because our soil is being washed, because we don't have enough rain. We're planting trees because we don't have sovereign walls for all children and so we have to continue maintaining the resources. For people who compare wheat and trees with politics, they have no experience. So we have to show that we're resilient. The second one is producing trees in our backyard. You know about the jokes on the medium. It's good. Continue the jokes, but we should also continue working. What surprises you that in the palace, anyone visiting from abroad sees our work and say, we should use our space the same as you do. And they say we can control inflation using what you started. There is laziness in our country, but we should continue growing in our backyards. The war in Ukraine has got several challenges in different African countries. It has also affected us. So we have the resources. We can plant lands, we can produce. We cannot always have others to produce and feed us. There is no government who does that in the world. So we have to work. We have to work hard in our agricultural sectors. When you go back to your areas, you have to see and support agricultural efforts. We have to renovate schools, we have to build more classrooms, we have to build houses of elderly and vulnerable. We should gain more from this summer season. There are activities in volunteerism. We have to expand that as well. Building schools and giving attention to priorities. We have to add value. The issue of our country should be a sovereign agenda. If that's the case, we can tackle other problems. But if this affects the main agenda, it's problematic. So we have to be calm. We have to look at our environment and should be stronger to our enemies. In Walaita, they have a saying. In Walaita, there are these four different colored ox live in an area. They sleep in all four directions with their horns outside. One time, the lion came to attack them and said, and he said, which one of you is a hero? And they started saying, it's me, it's me. And two of them fought and kicked one of the ox. And the lion ate the one who left. And a while after, he asked again, who's stronger? Then they fought again and one left. And the lion took that one and eventually ate all four of them. It sounds good when you hear it in Walaita. We have to protect our country from all sides. Those who seem to care are working to divide us. This house should lead and others should own this to work together and win. We're gonna win. But our enemies say, we spent our money, we did this and that. And they say, we couldn't make change. We'll continue stronger. And this is expected from all of you. We should withstand challenges and transform Ethiopia. If the speaker allows us, we can come back after a break. Let's take twenty minutes break and come back.